All right, you ready?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, we're gonna bring the Berlin Select Board Meeting Coffee Talk to order. And I have no idea what time it is.
Six thirty-four.
Six thirty-four. Um, thanks for coming, everybody. What?
You wanna do that?
Oh.
Hang on.
I thought I was gonna get away without it, you know? Open session public meetings are subject to being recorded. Your image and voice will be recorded.
Okay.
All right. And um, we had a couple of things we were gonna touch on tonight. Um, you want me to just? Plow through? Start out, start off. We'll start off with the FY twenty-five budget. And where we are in the process. Kristen, do you wanna share with us where we are?
I sure can. Can you hear me?
Can you talk a little bit louder?
I can. How's that?
Little bit, okay.
Okay, I'll try to talk as loud as I can. Um, so basically, we are at the part of the budget process where the FinCom is reviewing all of the requests that have been submitted, the budget requests that have been submitted from the departments and the boards and committees. So every Wednesday at seven thirty, from now through mid-March, the FinCom will meet with different groups to review their budgets. So we certainly encourage residents to come on out and meet with uh the FinCom, come to the meetings, ask questions. This is definitely the time to get involved and add any input that you have on any of these budgets. Um, and basically, I am in the process of compiling a town administrator recommendation on all of the requests. Then the Select Board at their next meeting, which will, sorry, meeting after next, which will be January twenty-ninth, will start voting on some of the recommendations. And then the FinCom will start voting on recommendations once they have heard from those particular departments. And we go along that way kind of incrementally until we go get every budget completed. So I can share with you, um, I'm actually at the Mass Municipal Association Annual Meeting in Boston. This is where the governor comes and tells us all the numbers for the upcoming budget. And so tomorrow, we will hear what I think inevitably will be bad news, unfortunately, that there is already a deficit in FY twenty-four. They have been making cuts to local funds. Unfortunately, we did get hit with one. Um, there was a fifty thousand dollar earmark for the fire department, and they have cut that down to twenty-five thousand. Uh, my understanding is the chief was going to use that for some equipment. Um, so thankfully, it's not fully cut. Uh, we'll still be able to put some of that money to good use. But um, the situation looks even bleaker when you get into FY twenty-five because the state already has a projected budget deficit. So fortunately, the good news is we don't depend heavily on state aid to fund our budget. We only get about two hundred and forty thousand dollars in unrestricted general government aid from the state. Uh, most of our budget is funded through local receipts, which would be taxes, fees, um, you know, motor vehicle, what have you. So there's a big um, a a big shift in some of those areas that we've seen increases in. Um, motor vehicle excise is one of them. Uh, we also have some uh significant hotel tax revenue, but we've also seen decreases and we anticipate some decreases in areas like meals tax with the recent closure of TGI Fridays. And we don't know when that restaurant will be replaced and up and running with a new business. So we're definitely gonna have to budget conservatively. Um, we certainly have faced a number of challenging years with COVID and with um a lot of what I would call unfunded mandates on the school side, which are special education needs. Um, and we are working to make sure that we're accurately assessing revenues on both the town and school side so that we can meet those needs for anticipated expenditures. Um, and you know, with that in mind, I had directed the departments, boards, and committees to submit a level-funded budget on the expense side with a two percent cost of living increase on the payroll side. And that is what the um departments and boards and committees stuck to. Unfortunately, there are also contractual increases that are non-discretionary. Um, just the cost of things have gone up as as they have everywhere. So we are certainly higher in some areas because of those, you know, non-discretionary contractual increases. Um, the one thing I can also say that's going to be interesting with this budget is that um there has been a significant and unexpected rise in home values, which does result in increased taxes. So the average single-family home in Berlin has increased approximately one hundred thousand dollars in value since FY twenty-three. So there's really a balance that we do here when we look at balancing the town needs, particularly when it comes to public safety, highway, uh, all of the needs of the town services that we provide at the town offices with the needs of the schools. And it's a delicate balance. There's never enough money for everybody. So we have to do our best to try to spread the thin resources that we have around while being sensitive to and minimizing the impact on taxpayers. Recognizing especially, you know, as home values do increase and that drives taxes up. Um, there's already an impact that was pretty significant, as I'm sure you folks have seen in the FY twenty-four tax year. And that was due to the town tapping into some of its excess levy capacity for FY twenty-four for some of those unfunded mandates, uh, including special education that we talked about. So FY twenty-four was certainly uh a really tough year to plan out. Um, you know, we were targeting a two and a half percent increase as we do every year, but we did actually have to increase the tax levy by four percent. And even with that four percent increase, the town still needed to utilize three hundred and eighty-two thousand, seven hundred and fifteen dollars in free cash to fund the Berlin-Boilston Regional School District budget. Um, as I mentioned, due largely to unanticipated increases in special education costs not funded by the state. Um, we also put a significant amount of money into capital last year, both for the towns and the schools. So there is less on the capital one-time resource side from free cash. So all the pieces are starting to come together. Everything's very preliminary. Uh, we will have more information as this weekend progresses. So for Monday night for the board meeting, I'll have some more information for you. Um, but what I can say is that things are going to be tight. And um, we did send a letter to the Berlin-Boilston Regional School District. It was signed by the Chair of the Select Board and the Chair of the Finance Committee, requesting that they stay within the two and a half percent increase that we try to stay within every year. And um, that is going to actually be my recommendation for right now, that we stay within those limits and the school will need to provide us with information to show that they have a level-funded need that goes above that two and a half. Uh, that is the, you know, will of the board and the FinCom, as I certainly understand it, and the the mandate that they've given to me to really try to keep all departments, town, and school within that two and a half percent to the extent possible. Now, as I mentioned before, there are contractual increases and some non-discretionary expenses that can raise that up a little higher, but we're gonna need to see the documentation and proof um that we need to go above that increase. So I don't know if anybody has any questions on the budget, but that is my brief overview for you.
If you do have a question, we ask that you come up and speak into the mic. Otherwise, you're not gonna be heard. Yeah. Um, Kristen, can you tell folks about what we are uh trying to do with our counterparts in Boilston? The Select Board and the Finance Committee plus your counterpart? And what we've received so far from the school for um an above-service budget?
Yes. So um, to answer your first question, we are trying to put together a joint Berlin-Boilston working group that consists of a FinCom representative from each town, a Select Board representative from each town, and the two town administrators, myself and April Stewart over in Boilston, that looks largely at the regional school district budget, since it's obviously shared between Berlin and Boilston. And to make sure everybody is on the same page and moving in the same direction because we have to have agreement on um where we're at with the budget or we could potentially have to go to what's called a regional town meeting. We like to make sure we are on the same page, getting the same messaging, putting out the same messaging. Uh, so you know, we're all rowing in the same direction. Um, what was the second question, Peg? I'm sorry.
What they, what they have provided so far to date in terms of an above uh service budget and preliminary numbers right now? What we're looking at and what we anticipate for a level-funded and why there's a delay?
Yeah, so they're using a new budgeting process that is recommended by the Massachusetts Association of Regional Schools, otherwise known as MARS. Um, they provide first a above-level services budget and then whittle it down to a level services budget. So what we do is we have the Regional School District in in December to give us some very preliminary numbers, and then they come back in February with much more firm numbers. And they will actually be coming before the FinCom on, I believe it is the twenty-first of February, and ACABIT will be coming on the fourteenth of February. If anyone's interested in attending the FinCom meetings, those are both Wednesdays at seven thirty in room two twenty-six, which is the room down at the end of the hallway on the left. Um, so basically, what they've provided so far is the above-level services portion of the budget, and they have not broken it down by town. It is a combination above-level services budget for Berlin Memorial, Boilston Elementary, and Tejanto, and it is about a million dollars. And I don't believe that is a sustainable number. Uh, I don't believe that Boilston does, believes that either, but I don't wanna speak on their behalf. They've also, in addition to that, are looking at somewhere around a three million dollar capital budget. I will tell you that our free cash was certified at one million, seven hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. And the FinCom has a free cash plan that says we can use up to thirty percent of that free cash for capital, which puts us uh around a half a million dollars, a little bit more. So even if we were to give all of our FY twenty-five capital to the schools, there's no way to meet a million and a half dollar budget. So what's gonna have to happen is they're gonna have to whittle it down to a level services budget and to the most urgent needs. And my recommendation will be that anything above the two and a half percent and what can be reasonably funded within the capital budget under the FinCom's policy will need to go to either an override or debt exclusion and let the residents decide what they want to do.
So we're looking at about a ten percent from Tejanto, from Berlin-Boilston, um, about ten percent-ish?
Ish, yeah. It's not broken down by town, so it's a little tough to tell because we pay a lower percentage at Tejanto, since we have less students there. I I would say that that's a good approximate percentage, though.
And ACABIT?
ACABIT is a very large increase. Um, we are seeing an increasing number of students going to ACABIT. This year, we're going to see thirty-seven uh for FY twenty-five. And that uh budget is going to increase by about sixty thousand dollars. Now, ACABIT is a little bit different because it's on a per-pupil assessment. And so that is an agreement that we have with ACABIT. Now, that doesn't mean that we don't go through their budget and we, you know, don't look at what the line items are and what the increases are and ask questions and make sure that we understand fully um where those increases are coming from. But it tends to be a bit of a more straightforward process because of that per-pupil assessment.
And then the last one I had, I don't know if you wanna try and fill people in on the uh Resource Officer, the SRO? Student, student Resource Officer? No, it's this coming Monday.
Oh, that's right, yeah. Monday night, um, there will be a meeting from five to seven P M. Um, Peg, is it at the Boilston Town Hall?
It's at Tejanto.
It is.
I think it's in the gym.
Okay, and that's going to take place to discuss a school resource officer for Boilston Elementary and Tejanto. In Berlin, we have sort of a de facto um school resource officer. It's not official under Mass General Law and all the requirements you have to meet there, but that is Officer Goulding, otherwise known as Goody. Um, and he provides an incredible service to the students and teachers over at BMS. Um, I'm hoping that perhaps we might be able at Boilston Elementary to find a similar balance. I understand that the needs at Tejanto are a little bit different when you get into older students. Um, there is significant cost that comes with an SRO because there is training, there are regional agreements that have to be issued, they have to have their own vehicle. They have to be, you know, they can't just do police work on the side. They're, you know, they're actually doing this dedicated, you know, one hundred percent of their time and have an office at the schools. So there will be a conversation Monday, um, basically to discuss those types of issues.
From, from what time to what time?
Five to seven.
Right. Okay.
Questions? I encourage you, it's it's gonna be a running theme. I encourage you to get involved. I encourage you to come to meetings. I encourage you to speak up. I know, you know, Chris has been approached, I've been approached on, oh my God, why did my taxes go up so much? And it's like, well, we had all these things going on, and if you could come to town, vote, town meeting, you would've had an opportunity to stand up and question and vote. But you did not. So um, tell your friends, bring them, come on down. We're a somewhat friendly bunch on Monday night.
FinCom meetings are very informative, informative, too.
Absolutely.
Wednesday nights?
Yep.
Seven thirty?
Seven thirty, yep, over there. Um, so we just don't want sticker shock again when the bills go out this time next year um for taxes. So do what you can to speak up. Don't be afraid to say no. You know, I love to say no um for that, but I say no with facts. I don't just say no based on that, so uh, but definitely get, the more involved you are, then the smoother this process is gonna go.
So questions? Any other questions? It's a lot of information.
It's a lot of information, and I was gonna add too, I try not to be too scary. I try to be pretty approachable. Um, you know, I'm available even by email. You can stop by. Uh, I'm happy to chat with folks at any time. Um, you know, about the budget process or any questions that you may have. Uh, my email is townadmin@townofberlin.com. Approach the Select Board members, you know, uh, come by Town Hall. Anything we can do to help you, you understand the process or make your voice heard, um, we we certainly welcome that.
Thank you.
All right. So the next subject that we wanted to touch on was the electronic voting and the choices that we've been given. Um, we've had a couple of uh vendors come. I think Peg, you're the one who has attended all of the?
And him too. I'm pointing to uh Tim Waisaki, the Chair of our N E E Committee. So Tim was heavily involved um in a lot of this. So I'm sure if you have questions that we can't answer, I'm gonna pick on him and uh offer up his services.
Work for my election.
Okay. So Kristen, if you wanna talk a little bit about it and cost and timing and uh what's gonna happen or potentially happen?
Sure, absolutely. So I'm just looking, I've put a spreadsheet together um from the two companies that responded that came out and did some demonstrations for uh town officials and boards and committee members. And the reason we're looking at the electronic, um, not the voting devices, but the actual count ballot counters is because counting of the ballots, I don't know if everyone realizes how lengthy of a process that is, and it's done by volunteers. Um, it can take twenty-two to twenty-four hours following an election to get all of the results tabulated. And so folks are staying well into the wee hours of the morning. Um, it's just an awful lot to ask of a volunteer base. And I think it's incredible that Berlin has had this. Um, I will tell you, it's not the case in every community. So it's certainly a testament to the spirit and community involvement that we have here. But I also feel that you can still be involved. There still is involvement for election workers and the ability for them to participate. But this will help tabulate and actually count those ballots. Um, and I I'll let Peg in a moment speak a little bit to the devices themselves and how difficult they are to jam and to their accuracy. But basically, what what I'm gonna be requesting from the board on Monday is ten thousand dollars in ARPA funding to purchase the device itself, which is at a cost of seventy-one hundred dollars. That's a one-time cost upfront for purchasing the device. And there was a discussion, do we need two devices or a backup device? But the one company that everybody seemed to be leaning toward that came to the demonstrations actually services so many cities and towns in Massachusetts that they have um support coverage via phone. They also have people within an hour of every city and town during major elections that can be on site. The ballot, the ballot um counters also have a place where you can deposit ballots if for some reason the machine were to go down and count them when they go back up. So we have that safeguard there rather than spending another seventy-one hundred on a machine that we probably wouldn't necessarily ever have to use. Um, there is also an annual cost for a warranty on the software and the hardware. That's three hundred dollars. And there's a cost for the ballots for the town election, and we estimate that to be about eight hundred and twenty-five dollars. Then there is a machine setup fee that is charged per election. So I spoke to Eloise about this because that all comes to about fourteen hundred total for between the ballots and the machine setup fee. She says the state does pay um and provide funding for their elections. So the one election that we would have to set aside this funding for is the annual town election in um May that happens every year. And so you're looking at adding about seventeen hundred dollars to the town clerk's election budget every year to be able to support that election if we were to purchase the device. Um, the reason we need to do it now is the devices actually have to be purchased in online one hundred and twenty days. I did confirm that with Eloise today. One hundred and twenty days before a state election. It's ninety days before a local, but the first election that we would have that we could use it for is the primary in the fall, in September. And we miss the deadline, I believe, by three days if we do this at town meeting. And the idea is to be able to have this in place for the next election. So that's why um I would be requesting uh to use a small amount of ARPA funding for it. And then I would be looking in FY twenty-six to increase the town clerk's budget in the election lineup and by seventeen hundred dollars annually to cover um the ongoing annual cost.
Questions?
I know it's a big change.
Hang on, we have uh Mr. Waisaki approaching the uh?
Hi. So a couple of things I wanted to talk about with the overall cost and especially the recurring cost of the seventeen hundred dollars. One of the things that we would need as an offset to that increase would be decreasing the amount of time that a police officer would be necessary at polls. Whenever ballots are in open format or not locked and secured uh under Mass General Law, a police officer must be present. Um, that is a detail officer. So for the period after the polls?
No, I think you need to pick it up since you're kinda tall.
So anyway, what I was saying for the folks on Zoom is that there is an offset associated with this um in the form of a detail officer's uh cost, and and there it is, I can hear it now. The detail officer uh must be present whenever open ballots.
We're waiting, we're waiting till Brittany comes running in the room again. But you know, we'll just see.
So what I'm trying to say is the detail officer would normally need to be present for less time because we are actively counting ballots.
You're fine, I just want to put them on the wrong like. You feel like you were before normal?
Oh.
All right.
This is the second pass at a hybrid meeting, so uh appreciate you all being guinea pigs while we work out the kinks.
One more time with feeling, so.
You need spirit hands.
With the spirit. So the detail officer would need to be present for less, fewer hours than they would necessarily be otherwise. Um, typically, when the polls close at eight P M., we, in the last presidential election, we worked till four A M. So from eight to four, we had uh individuals there. We closed the polls and we all left, and it was about dawn. So um, that's part of the the need behind this. So there is some offset of that. As uh Peg mentioned, there is uh aid that comes to us in the form for the state election. So this would uh be part of the overall um town increase. And additionally, our election workers, they do a lot for us. They aren't entirely volunteers, but they're they're not exactly paid, you know, huge amounts of money either. And um, it's asking an awful lot, as Kristen said, to have somebody work a twenty-hour day. And in a lot of cases, twenty-plus hours days, and they're volunteers, and some people have to get up to work the next morning. So uh, it's, it's long overdue. Additionally, these machines are very secure. They're very accurate. Um, we are not going to a paper-free ballot system. So all of the ballots that are marked by a voter would be retained, could be counted at any time, could be hand-counted at any time or run through the machine again. Um, so this is really just aligning Berlin to the standards that most communities have across the Commonwealth. We're one of the very few uh communities that still does this. I'll, I'll go back to the twenty sixteen um Mass Third Congressional Primary. We were the last, one of the very last communities to actually bring our results in. And that election was uh, if I recall correctly, decided by less than the difference of Berlin's vote. So we, there were a lot of people who were deciding who the next person likely to be going to Congress was, looking at us. And it took us hours and hours to do that. Um, to give another example, in the last, um, when the state uh Senator's race was done, that was already called before we even pulled our, pull our tape. Well, we wouldn't even pull it, before we even started counting. So in a way, this allows Berlin to be more of the the conversation, more of the uh part of the overall election. Thank you.
Tim, do you wanna talk about the one question that we all had?
What's happening with the box? So first of all, the new, the new system, both systems, and I believe Eloise probably uh decided on the L H S, what I'm hearing. They have a number associated with it. So yes, indeed, you can tell what vote you were and and be able to report it on Berlin Neighbors Connect or or the, or the medium of your choice. So that is true. Um, the existing box, um, we were thinking about maybe we'd have a nice retirement party for it or something, do something nice. But the, the uh, the larger box has a digital display, so you can see it has a, a lot more, actually more voter privacy, honestly, in some respects. And um, the older box, we have to empty it about every two hundred and fifty votes. Um, otherwise it jams, and it doesn't really keep track of the number of votes very well anymore. So we have difficulty reconciling the books at the end of the night. Uh, it doesn't always ink every ballot properly, so that, you know, that's a requirement to to spoil the ballot, so it couldn't be potentially recast. Um, so this, this is a good, good upgrade. And and like was mentioned before, if everything goes wrong, um, it has a little bypass chute, and you put the ballots in the bypass chute, and it goes in there, and they're just, we just count when the machines back up. Um, L H S, to recap one other point, uh, L H S has a local network. Um, they're based out of New England. So they have the ability to actually dispatch people with a replacement should something go wrong. So in the worst-case scenario, power goes out, the box's battery that is six hours is actually run out. Um, we would just be simply bypassing those votes and then counting them at the end of the night. So the end result is zero. So it's probably more than we needed to know.
No, it's not. It's, it's, it's great. I mean, and it's extremely secure. It's an encrypted thumb drive.
Yeah, well, the L H S one actually has um similar to what a camera has, and there's two of them, and they're both um highly encrypted and locked. That's the other thing, all the controls, the box itself is locked all the time. It has a shroud that goes over it that makes it inaccessible for people to, you know, tamper with. Um, and again, you have a detail officer there, so i- it's, it's very highly secure. We can prep it beforehand, wheel it down to the polls, three buttons, and we're
Ready to go.
We're ready to go.
Yeah, and it's not the hanging Chad ballots. If you think back to school and you had the little Iowa test where you had to color in the oval, we tried them. We tried barely touching them. We tried coloring them on the outside. Uh, we tried jamming it sideways, couple ballots at a time. Well, 'cause you wanna see. Um, so it was kinda nice that we could see if we could break this machine, and we could. Between all of us, we couldn't, so.
And the rep actually crumpled up a ballot.
Yep.
And the rep actually crumpled up a ballot, smoothed it flat out and still took it through and read it correctly. So it was pretty nice. Um. The additional thing that I would add is um everyone's worried, okay, what if they don't do the bubble? You know, we did an X and it counted. I did a check mark and it counted.
A slight line through it.
Little line through it. It was very good. And the the last selling point, because I am passionate about this. I think this is something that's long overdue and and necessary for us. Um, is that for writing campaigns, currently, right now, we have a lot of of manual work to even identify and get those. With this system, it detects the write-in and it puts it into a separate chute. So at the end of the day, we pull it out and we just count up the write-ins. So the only counting we have to do is maybe whatever that individual or individuals gets. And the last point I would make, um, part of the impetus behind this is we are seeing increasing number of ballot questions that are on the ballot every year. Um.
Forty, I think.
There were ten that were proposed this time. Well, several of them did qualify. Um, along with the regional school district where you have different votes that you have to tabulate, we find that the volunteers are having difficulty with that. Um, there's a lot of rework that takes place after the volunteers who did the counting go home because we'll find that a packet was counted incorrectly. And we'd have to recount the ballot. So 50 ballots at a time have been recounted by counted once by one group and then either Jane or I or Lisa or whomever is helping out will have to sit down with a poll worker and count it again. So there's, there's a lot of inefficiency that's built into this.
The machines are truly slick. They honestly look like a blue big trash can.
They look like a recycling dumpster.
Or a grill. I think the last one, they said, looked like a grill. Um, but it is extremely secure. As Tim was saying, there, if this is the machine, there's a top that goes over it and it locks. So you can't get in there and try to tinker with it and futz in results. There's a tape that comes out that has all the numbers that get matched up with what we have. So it is extremely secure. I think more secure than one, check, two, check. So.
And to give another idea of what's happening behind the scenes, I I think most people here probably know Jane Sawyer. Day of the polls, she spends about six or seven hours handwriting all of those little wrappers that we put around the ballots for counting. So she spends literally seven or eight hours of her day by hand. Her hand is just completely messed up at the end of it. So, you know, this is all those things that we've been doing. It was feasible when we were a smaller community. It was feasible when we had smaller elections. We've grown, elections are more complicated, and the number of things that you physically have to count and the ballots themselves are more complicated.
It's another one of those growing pains.
Little bit.
You know, for for somebody or for a town that, you know, we all expect it's so small and going to stay that way, but just growing a little bit.
It is. When you, you know, when you pick up five or 600 voters, that's a lot. It's 10 packets. And and I'm looking at Roger because he's counted a few times, you know.
Yeah.
That's two people who take 30 minutes if they're fast.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
So there you have it. And and the last thing I close with this is outside of the scope of this, but we are also looking at uh electronic check-in and checkout for the poll pads. Um, right now, we're doing that on paper. We've all experienced this when we ask you for your number, your street, and then your name. Um, we then have to reconcile that and getting two tiers of people to exactly match match lists correctly. Um, is usually fairly rare. We usually have one or two that are off and we have to figure that out for the closing night. Um, so bear that in mind. We're not talking about that, I think, right now, but someday we might like to go down that thing. And that's something that was evaluated separately. Thank you. It is. It's an iPad. So it would load the voter rolls of the town of Berlin into it. Um, and then you'd have two of them and you would just you'd check the person out, just like you do now. It's just be paperless.
And for the folks that are online, obviously, if you have a question, just uh pop up your hand and I will do my best not to disconnect you and and uh let you let you have a a say. But I think it's a cool thing. I liked, I liked the presentations. I liked them coming down. There was a wide selection of folks who were there. So we all got to try it, which was kind of nice. Uh, you know, of course, there'll be marketing and I'm sure discussions with the town of uh this is coming and this is how it's going to work and this is what it's going to do to try try and quell the fears and of the but my cha-ching is gone. We, I don't know, we'll leave it there. You can stand and take your picture. You know, we'll pretend uh that you put your ballot in. So it's all good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Any questions from folks? Okay. Carol, did you have a question?
Not to deter people from asking questions, but.
It's all about exercising the need.
Kristen said the price, the amount is 7,100 per year for a license agreement. How long is that license agreement?
Seventy-one is the cost of the machine.
The machine, is there a license agreement that goes along with that? And uh, you know, upgrades to the machine, so on and so forth. It seems as though that's a one-line item that you want to carry forward. Or is there room for, you know, that's 7,100 in today's money?
I think Kristen.
Kristen, do you have that? Or we have Tim and Lisa busily looking up uh.
It's 1,700 that is firm year to year. So there is the possibility that that could.
A little bit louder, Kristen?
Sure. It's 71, 1,700 that we also have to build into the budget. So 7,100 is the upfront cost of the machine. And then 1,700 is what needs to go into the election budget every year. It's $300 for the warranty and annual maintenance. And then the cost of printing the ballots and um preparing the machine for the election.
And these machines are are like the stoves of old that our parents have. They have about a 15 to 20-year lifespan on them. So we're not going to be chugging through them every couple of years.
Yeah. And if the ballot cost that was discussed there, um, that's for the town election. Because the state, for any state or federal, will check.
Yep. But I'm sure you know what? If you probably evened out the money and the time and the effort that folks are being paid for and the detail that the officers are being paid versus the 17 and 300 and whatever the other costs are, at some point, it's it's going to do this.
Then the actual yearly maintenance fee is 300.
Okay. So not too bad. Cool. Anything else? Any other questions? All right, next item.
Um, the next item um that we had on our agenda was ARPA. And um, I don't know if, Kristen, do you want to give like an overview? Here's, here's my the last overview that I think we got.
Yeah.
Sure. Um, if it works for you, I thought I'd just give a brief overview of the projects that have been funded through ARPA and have had funding appropriated for them and where they're at. I'll try not to bore you too much because there are 18 projects under ARPA. So the town received 968,458 dollars and 14 cents in ARPA funds. Now, these are the federal funds that came through as part of the pandemic. And the town chose to take those as what's called revenue replacement, which means they can essentially be used on anything. So that flexibility has been really great um for filling in in areas where we really needed projects done, where there was ex-cost overruns due to inflation um and everything else that's been going on with the economy. So the first project that the select board funded um was a part-time 20.5-hour-a-week social services director for FY23, uh 22, 23, and 24. Um, that is the council on aging director who is 19 and a half hours uh right now. So this brought her up to a full-time position doing social services and council on aging services. Um, I am recommending that that become a part of the operating budget going forward, as I definitely see the need uh for those services to be continued to be provided for the community. Uh, the town did put funds toward an audit for $3,000. Um, we also did the community survey, otherwise known as the gerontology study that looked at aging in Berlin and how folks um, what some of the concerns were that folks had about being able to age in place and what they'd like to see uh through part of the community. That was a $30,000 project that is complete. And we do have the full study and recommendations, which we presented at the select board, and it's also available on the website. We did some file cleanup at the town offices that uh we allocated $1,000 and to date, we've spent $480.58 on that. Uh, we also allocated $30,000 towards the town offices air handler replacement, which overall is, I believe, $120,000 project. And we did not have full funds to fund that project. So we were able to tap into ARPA, add a small amount extra and be able to complete that air handler. Anybody who has spent some time um in the town offices, the uh temperature issues are pretty bad, depending where I, where you are in the building. Some places are freezing, some places are boiling. So we're trying to get that situation remedied and that air handler has been failing. So uh that project is actually underway. The air handler is in place. They are just going through the final phases of hooking everything up and going through the final walkthrough to make sure everything is working correctly. Um, the next project is highway garage weatherization for $25,000. There were some weatherization items on the garage doors that were not done as part of the new highway garage project. However, Fred has been trying to get the company to pay for at least the either the materials or the installation. I can't remember which one. They've reached an agreement to pay for one of those and we would just have to pay for the other. Um, I have to say that has been um a bit of a challenge pulling that all together because once you try to do something after the fact, um, it it is often a coordination issue. So we are working to try to get that piece of it done. But we did set aside $25,000 um in case we need it. I don't anticipate we're going to need that much. Um, we also set aside $150,000 for road engineering. And the idea behind this was to be able to do some actual engineering work for projects so that we were grant-ready and shovel-ready in order to be able to apply for those grants. So to date, we have spent 4,500 on one complete streets grant that we put in for half a million dollars to improve walkability in the quote-unquote center uh of town. And that would be around um the common, uh, the church-owned common as well as going down by the library, 19 Carter, 1870 Town Hall and the Bullard House. So that would add sidewalks and roadway improvements in that area if funded. Um, the town does have a complete streets plan that was created in 2016 by the planning board. And once you actually have this plan, you can apply for this federal funding to actually implement those projects. And this project was determined to be at the top of the list. So the funding was to complete the drawings in order to be able to apply for the grant and for some assistance in writing that grant. So we're hoping to be able to hear in the next couple of months. We should hear in spring if we receive that funding should make a big difference um in the center area. Uh, the next one is a facilities and reuse study, which is underway. We allocated 75,000. Uh, fortunately, it came in lower than that. And the energy committee is actually going to be kicking in some funds um to help offset the energy audit portion of the study. Basically, this study is going to look at the buildings in town and determine what we should be doing with them. Should we be putting more money into them? Um, or should we be getting rid of them? Should we, you know, what's our long-term maintenance plan for these buildings? Uh, where, you know, have these buildings reached past their useful life where it doesn't make any sense at this time to put more money into these buildings? So um that facilities and reuse study also includes a space analysis to make sure that we look at where departments and different um uh buildings have space. And if they're utilizing the space in the best possible way, can we change what we do? Do we need as much storage as we have? Uh, we have a lot of older buildings that basically are being used for storage right now. But meanwhile, the roofs are falling apart, the systems aren't working, and there's they're end up costing us more money to actually just use them and maintain them. So we're going to have some big decisions that we need to make once that study is complete regarding what we do um with a lot of these older buildings that are town-owned properties. So I think that study is going to be very enlightening. Um, I am thinking FY26 is going to be the year of capital and the year of putting more maintenance line items into the budget. Because if you fix a hole, it is a whole lot cheaper than having to replace an entire roof. And there is ongoing routine maintenance that we are trying and struggling with the limited funding that we have to keep up with. Whereas if we were doing it, it would save us a lot in long-term costs and system issues that occur when you don't keep up with maintenance. So there's a lot to that study. Um, we also allocated 1,500 to recreation for summer programming, which I believe they are planning to use this summer for some summer camp uh type activities for kids. And um I think everyone has seen the recreation courts that are down on South Commons. We were able to add 28,134 dollars and 25 cents to the funding they had already received through town meeting for uh through um town meeting for those funds. And so um that was able to enable that project to go forward. Um, town office server replacement, we were able to replace two old and failing servers at the town offices for a total of $21,445.70. We also allocated $200,000 initially to the third floor renovation of the town offices with the goal of trying to uh put dormitories and an evidence room, bit of a day room and a kitchen up there for fire EMS and police. Unfortunately, when we did our initial conceptual design and estimate, the cost estimate came in at about 1.7 million dollars. Obviously, that's not funding that we have um or funding we feel, you know, comfortable going and asking anyone to to fund right now through a debt exclusion or anything of that nature. The one good thing is that the state is actually coming out with a new program that is similar to what they do for schools through the MSBA, which is the Mass School Building Authority. There is legislation out right now that is moving forward and looking promising to create a pot of funding for uh municipal buildings. And so hopefully, we could tap into that, perhaps use a little bit of this funding as a match. We'll have to see how the timing works with um when we have to use up the ARPA funds. But um that one's kind of a stay tuned. And actually, Monday night, if anyone's more interested in interested in finding out more information on that project, this coming Monday at 7:30, both chiefs will be at the select board meeting to talk about the initial conceptual design and cost estimates for that third floor renovation and what it entails um in terms of the needs of the department and what they were hoping to outfit um up there. Uh, let's see, digitization of documents, trying to get away from files upon files of paper. We have about $5,000 at allocated for that. I think based on some cost estimates we've received so far, it's going to cost more to purchase that software. And those softwares tend to have an ongoing annual cost. So that's something we're in the process of exploring that could be potentially more expensive. Um, also allocated funding for a website upgrade for $10,000. And I'm expecting a quote any day from Civics Plus, who currently does our website, to do a redesign to make it more user-friendly. People say that they can't find things. Um, we're not updating it regularly enough. Uh, I want to also have training for an employee as part of that process and have one person be the central webmaster, if you will, that all of the updates go through so that we can update things in a timely fashion. And you don't have to have 25 people knowing how to use the website. I just think it's much more efficient to have everything funneled through one person who can make changes to the website as they get emailed from different departments or boards and committees. Um, there's also 180,000 allocated for playground equipment at South Commons. I know Julie Lee and the Rec Committee are working on designing and selecting that equipment off of a state bid contract right now. So that is underway. Uh, then there is the barn demo on South Commons and adding potentially some parking for $50,000. I have also requested another 50 from capital to complete that project because it looks like it'll be about 100,000 between the demo and the parking. It's about 30,000 to demo the barn. It looks like it'll be about 70,000 to do some parking paving over there. So project's still underway. We'll see if we get um allocated some additional funding as part of the FY25 capital plan to be able to make that project happen. We do also have to get through historical commission um which does have the right to do a demolition delay um on the building because it is old enough. So we're working on all of those. So we're working on all of those pieces together. Um, and the last two projects, then I promise I'll be quiet. Um, we have fifty five thousand allocated for improvements at the Bullard and eighteen seventy. Mostly looking at drainage right now and we talked about the front stairs at eighteen seventy as well. So we're in the process of researching what's going on with drainage coming down the hill from eighteen seventy. That's um causing impacts in the basement at Bullard. And we wanna make sure we deal with any site issues drainage wise before we pave that parking lot and put in an ADA parking space up there. Cause obviously you don't wanna go back and rip it up later. So we're looking at that. And then lastly, we ended up taking fifty two thousand away from the third floor renovation at the request of the chiefs. For a police cruiser because the prices are going up exponentially. I believe it was twelve thousand dollars, the chief said the price was going up but he um for FY twenty five. But he was actually able to get one of the last FY twenty three cruisers on the lot. If we were able to allocate this fifty two thousand in um ARPA funding. And it ends up being after they outfit the vehicle and everything, a net savings of somewhere between seven and eight thousand dollars to the town. By being able to purchase that vehicle now as opposed to waiting for the price increase that's inevitably coming in FY twenty five. And I'm done.
That was quite the list, uh, anything that you have questions on? When Kristen was talking about the um building that is potentially coming down at South Commons, it's the brown, it's the brown barn. Uh, we know that there's a lot of structures that are out there, so we wanna be very specific. It's the brown barn, since the courts have been redone, we're hoping to put in parking spaces, better use of the courts. I know that uh Rec will be talking about the pavilion where the town had voted that it was gonna be on this side, now they're gonna want it on this side. Just so that we can have more parking area there uh for that. So the list, list is long, what do you have? Oh, Mr. McKelk, come on down.
Do we have a running total of how much we've spent of the ARPA money and how much we have left?
Yes.
Yes, and yes. Uh, so it looks like we have spent uh funds expended to date. Uh, so a little over two hundred and thirteen thousand, so we have about seven hundred and fifty five to go. But these are projects that are already allocated, but what we're doing is to say, oh, this project costs ten dollars. Or we thought it was gonna cost ten, it only costs seven dollars and fifty cents, so we have two fifty. So we're gonna wanna look at this column over here to see what other incidentals are popping up. Um, that we didn't either anticipate the cost or is a, oh my god, we need two dollars and fifty cents to finish out this project.
Is it up to individual committees like Rec to put in requests for ARPA money? How does that work?
It's pretty much done, um, when ARPA came out, what, a couple years ago? Yeah, two years ago, um, that we had reached around to all the committees to ask.
Because one of, one of the things that's been lingering is a number of years ago, there was some. Uh, pretty strong interest in putting a walking path around the South Commons. And um, which would be flat, it would be very amenable to moms and strollers and kids with bicycles. And I would also add that it could be tied into Northbrook Village to allow those folks uh some safe. Stable walking surfaces. And I don't know if anybody's behind that, but it seems to me that that should be on the list as well.
But recreation was dealing, but that was nothing.
That was a number of years ago.
No, I'm talking about like more recently.
Um, they have a master plan for that whole playground down there, but honestly, Paul, I don't think it includes a walkabout.
That's unfortunate.
Yeah.
It would be good use of the money and good use of that space. I mean, we're, we're consolidating schools, recreation and all that. And we're talking a five or six foot wide path going around, you're not eating up valuable space. And you're providing uh a very viable alternative for people who seek to be healthy.
Thank you. Is um recreation meeting right now?
Yeah, they're over there.
Yes, so recreation is meeting across the hall. If you're interested.
I was gonna say, I wonder if that could be a potential future like CPA project.
Yeah. Cause I know that there were some issues with funding that it was, oh, it's gonna cost. Oh, oh, it's gonna cost so that 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 project kinda went.
Well, the estimates they brought in was only a one, I don't know what your sources were, it was way up base.
But any other questions on spending of ARPA money? Nada? Okay.
Nobody up there either?
Uh, nope.
Okay, and I guess we're up for any questions that people might have on other items.
And if you don't, I do, I came prepared, I know that's a big shock to you, that I have questions, just saying. Mm-hmm. Nada? Alright. Kristen, can you give an update on CSX with all the incidents that we have had in town with trains tipping over? In various parts of town and what we're trying to do to rectify the issue so that. Our folks in fire and police don't find out that there's a trail derailment via Facebook, neighbors connect.
Yeah, it's, it's a little tricky, cause I have to say, since they are such a large conglomerate and they don't have eyes everywhere. Uh, unfortunately, sometimes the neighbors are the ones that see it before other people do. However, uh, there is a regional contact that we now have with CSX and we have a hotline. That we can call to report anything twenty four hours a day that is occurring. And that way, we've made it clear that, you know, any information they have, we want communicated to us right away. Because like you said, ideally, we don't wanna find out about this on Facebook, we wanna know about it and be able to mitigate it. We are also working on getting funding from CSX for cleanup to address um a lot of the issues that have come from those derailments.
Yeah, there was a question, I was in the library the other day and a woman came up to me and asked about the collection of rail trails and uh rails rather and iron. Down on the, down on South Street and what we could do to get rid of it. So I tried to explain to her that the best of my knowledge was that if you have the track and you go thirty feet one way and thirty feet the other way, that's CSX land. So we don't really have a lot of, hey, come please, pick up your trash, it looks really bad in town. Um, I bring it up constantly to Chief Mike, I'm sure he's probably sick of me.
And to the board.
And to the board, and I brought it up to Fred, um, our highway guy, because the beams are kinda high when you're coming down. What is that wrote Jones uh for that, but he assured that it wasn't a safety issue, that there were no line of sight issues. Um, my favorite is that there's barrels of trash on Linden that drive me nuts. I tried to take them away, but they were full of stuff, I couldn't lift them up um for that, or I just would have thrown them out. But um, I mean, is there anything, any other questions that you have on concerns for CSX? Come on down.
So was there any hazardous material that travels um that line through through town? And if so, is there any emergency number that we can call? Does anyone know if hazardous material hits through?
Kristen, do you remember the last meeting that we were at on Allen Road, um, there was, where there was the tippage? Supposedly, Carol, the information that was provided is that there is no hazardous material coming through town.
Ever.
On that line, I think.
Yeah, and everything is labeled on the outside of the container, so they know if there is a spill, what's involved. Um, and if something does happen, you should call um PD dispatch. And uh they have the numbers that we can report um any incidents that occur.
Absolutely. Um, Kristen, do you wanna talk about one of my favorite topics, the electric bill at the town barn?
The barn?
And what we're doing in regard to solar panels?
Oh, the highway barn, I'm sorry, the brown, the brown barn.
Town barn is highway barn.
Mm-hmm. So we are almost live with the solar panels. Um, they are finishing up the connections right now, I think Fred said they had one more connection to make. And then we are able to get the uh project underway. So uh we're very close and very excited. Uh, we have signed all the agreements and got all the rebates and done everything we need to do. So uh it's literally looking like it's a matter of weeks at this point, the weather has not been uh helping. So it could take a little longer if the weather continues not to cooperate, but.
Yeah, cause uh for folks in the crowd, those bills during December, November, October, January, February. Probably run about six, seven thousand dollars a month. I know, so every time like I looked at the bill, I'm like, I have to leave, cause there are bad things that will come out of my mouth if I continue to look at the bill. Um, so it's nice that we have this plan, at least in place to defray some of those costs and bring them into alignment. Um, anything on the South Street Bridge that you can share with us? Are we still on track for maybe a year, nine months to a year?
We are on track for nine months to a year, um, and we, the good news is we do have the funding to fix it.
Was that, was that the recent funding that um Fred received? Isn't there like a hundred and ninety thousand that he got from somewhere?
No, that was some additional chapter ninety funding that we received. This was a grant um that VHB uh helped us get and they are actually finishing the design right now and the engineering. Uh, of the project and then we have to put it out to bid and actually do the construction and then we will be able to open it. But unfortunately, and I've seen this happen before, when you have a bridge that's in poor quality and the state knows you have money to replace it. To reduce liability, they make you shut it down until you replace it, because that removes the liability off the state. And ultimately off the town, um, because there is the concern that even if you put like planks, like temporary planks over it. And then that cost is about seven or eight thousand dollars. Um, if they shift and someone gets hurt, either walking or driving. Um, that's obviously a huge risk and not what we want to happen. So for safety reasons, um, the state did make us shut it down.
Alright, Ms. McDonald, I see that your hand is up, so I'm gonna do my best to allow you to talk. Alright, I think you're ready to roll and come off mute.
Alright, can you hear me?
Indeed.
Um, so I just want to let everybody know that um the company. I'm not entirely sure actually if it's the company that's gonna be building it, but um. An application for a notice of intent has been received by the Conservation Commission for that bridge project. So that is a step in the right direction. Um, so I just wanted to let everybody know that it is moving forward.
Carolyn, can you talk a little bit more about the, the NOI and the process just for folks who, you know, don't regularly go to your meetings? And don't really understand the processes and procedures for that?
Sure, so a notice of intent. Um, when work is being done in a riverfront area or wetlands. Um, which there's plenty of those around town, but obviously a bridge um involves rivers. Uh, by their nature, um, a notice of intent is meant to. Turned of, sorry, sorry for stumbling here. Um, so a notice of intent is filed with the Conservation Commission. And that says, we intend to do work within the jurisdictional area. And so we have them come in, we look at their plan and we say. Um, yes, you can do this work, but you need to put X, Y, and Z safeguard in place to protect the resource area. So that when you're done, uh, you know, you're not filling in the wetlands, you're not um silting up the river. You're not doing, you know, all the bad things that can happen if the work isn't done properly. And so then once we come to an agreement about how the work is gonna proceed, we issue an order of conditions. Which is a basically a permit, which says you are permitted to do this work under these conditions.
Awesome, thank you, I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Alright, now I'm gonna try and take you off mute.
Uh, so remove permission to speak.
You remove your permission to speak, alright.
No, that's it, you have to remove my permission to speak.
Well, you know, I just could end up accidentally removing you, so apologies ahead of time, but uh, let's see what happens. Yeah, there she goes. Any other questions? Come on, you gotta have something that's on your mind.
Road paving?
Road paving. Yes, next question, no. I know that uh Fred and company have like a list of streets that they go down. I don't know who's on it, I can tell you Crosby, it's getting fun. To you must hit it on the way to the dump, um, you know, so if anyone sees me driving on the wrong side of the road, it's intentional to avoid the pothole. But um are there specific streets that you have in mind that are absolutely horrendous?
I was under the impression that Peach Hill was on the list and that the funding was there, but it wasn't approved.
I don't know, um, we can take that as a takeaway and ask Fred, do you know when he's coming to our next meeting?
Well, he was supposed to be at our last one, but then we had the snowstorm.
Mm-hmm.
So I think we gave.
I can ask.
Okay.
Yeah, Kristen can ask.
Yeah, I saw it going up uh Lyman with the um, the tree chipper. So something was going down there and then he was sanding, uh, cause Lyman River is coming down around the corner. So uh he was, he was doing that, but we'll, we'll give you an update on uh Peach Hill. Yeah.
Did you, did you say something, Kristen?
Oh, I was just gonna say, yeah, I can talk to Fred, I know there's gonna be some cracked ceiling going on, I'm working on a bid for that right now. Um, and then I know there is some road paving, so let me get that information, we can make it available um on the website, Facebook. Um, I will get that from Fred and get it out, just give me, give me a little bit of time, we'll get it to you.
Okay, alright.
Oh, Roger.
We would have had a handheld mic, but last night the thing kept going in and out, they tried to replace it, so unfortunately.
I was just wondering, what was, or is there any progress being made with River Bridge?
We, we are always very positive about um the way things are going with River Bridge. But then occasionally, we do get some stumbling blocks. Um, Kristen, did you wanna take a stab at this, or do you want me to?
Sure, um, we do have negotiations ongoing, we're working on a fourth modification to the development agreement. That we hope to bring to town meeting in May. Um, I can tell you that this is, we are hoping to have this be the last final modification to the development agreement. That ties all of the loose ends up and uh gets us to hopefully where we need to be. Um, I can tell you that the. Times have changed, situations have changed, there is negotiation going on and there are certain terms in that development agreement. That it may no longer be relevant or able to be met and that is the part that we're working on. Can we get something else instead if that is no longer possible? And because we're going through legal counsel on it, I can't, and it's under negotiation, I can't say much more than that. But we are trying to make sure that we protect the town's interests and get as much as we can. And in, and that of the original agreement and keeping it intact as we can.
And I believe um Kristen and I are meeting with town council next week.
Wednesday.
And hopefully, after that, we will um meet with the Cennys.
We're very close, I think.
Yeah, I think so too, but I've thought that before.
I'm hopeful. Questions? Come on, I see you smiling. Okay, well, alright.
Well, I was just gonna say, um, before you go, help yourself, if there's coffee left, there's uh Buckeyes, there's Oreos.
Lots of coffee.
Help, help yourself.
Yep.
And um.
Appreciate you being here.
Take, yeah, and take, take advantage, we're here, if you'd like to speak to us offline.
That's when we'll promise everything, cause we're not on camera, so just.
Uh, don't do that.
No, no, no.
I won't let her.
We'll say, but no, uh, thank you, don't forget, town meeting's coming up in May, town elections are coming up in May. Uh, participate, get involved, have a say.
Usually, and we usually have another coffee talk uh late April.
Correct, to talk about.
To talk about the budget and the articles that will be on town meeting.
Yep. Alrighty, everyone, stay safe in the snow tomorrow.